All right, welcome to the City Council Stewardship Subcommittee. Today is September ninth and we're calling the meeting to order. It's two thirty-three P M. For the record, my name is Mickey Durding, Strategic Initiatives Manager. And I'll be facilitating today's meeting. The Subcommittee members present here at the Dais are Mayor Pro Tem Megan Perkins and Counselor Mike Riley. And also at the Dais is City Manager Eric King and City Attorney. Mister Lighthouser, Lighthouser, excuse me, Ian Lighthouser, and then City Clerk Ashley Bunt. We have a packed agenda today, but before we get started, let's please approve the minutes from July twenty-nine.
Move approval of the minutes from July twenty-nine.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? I was in favor.
All right. And so the first presentation is regarding the Deschutes County Deflection Program. We'll be receiving a briefing from City of Bend Police Chief Mike Krantz. District Attorney Stephen Gunnels and County Sheriff's Office Captain Schultz.
Thank you, Mike Krantz, Chief of Police City of Bend, and I'm joined by Steve Gunnels, District Attorney for Deschutes County. And Mike Schultz, Captain for the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, runs the jail. Next slide. So today I shift around a little bit. I have the opportunity to really run you through House Bill four thousand two and some of the developments with the law enforcement assistance deflection program. What's that going to look like in Deschutes County? About fifteen minutes of that and we'll leave about fifteen minutes for questions and opportunities to talk a little more. Essentially, House Bill four thousand two recriminalize what we all know as possession of controlled substance. And made those what's called drug enforcement misdemeanors, an unclassified misdemeanor, and it must be filed in circuit court. Unclassified is treating treating a crime similar to what is also referred to as a misdemeanor with some exceptions, some differences. There are more questions about that. DA Gunnels can answer that. It also creates an option for deflection services for those that are engaged in possession of controlled substance and have criminal charge out of this. And then counties were allowed to create programs that work for other communities. I think that was one of the key things is twenty-three counties statewide have entered into the deflection program options and the 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 success is that we're creating something that works for our community in Deschutes County. Some of the grant details, there was some money that came along with this to assist in some of the funding initially for setting up the deflection program. State of Oregon offered those grants to kick off the programs. Counties were required to be counties were required to be the grant administrators. It's one of the reasons why Deschutes County is administrator of the grant. Specifically, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office applied for and received just over eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in grant money the first year. Captain Schultz had a had a short turnaround time to write that grant with the assistance of a lot of partners. There's there's obviously not enough funds as as we see this program kickoff to meet all the requirements. But that essentially those funds covered F T E costs for a program coordinator hired through Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, which was one deputy Neil Marchington. And who was is was and is very passionate about deflection opportunities. He really engaged in that work before this program was even going on, trying to connect people with resources. And what it sounds like, and Captain Schultz can can address this a little bit, when this came up, he was really the natural perfect fit. And I think we're really lucky as as a county to have a deputy as the coordinator for the program who really believes in it and has engaged in it is he came and did our first training today at the police department, excited about it. Additionally, there's four navigators, maybe five?
Or right now, we're looking to see about five.
That worked with our our care partners, which is Best Care and Ideal Options. So there are two service providers that provide the navigators. And we'll go through that, what that means a little bit in the process. And then, of course, we'll continue to look for future state of Oregon grant funds to cover the ongoing costs of the program.
So eight hundred, eight hundred and forty thousand, is that for one year of those costs or?
Yeah, for one year as we go through. Much of it salaries, you know, we will have four navigators, maybe five. We have, we we thought we were going to get seven hundred and fifty thousand, but at the very end with our grant, they added a hundred thousand dollars to our.
But but it's for one year basically.
And then some of the things that are less talked about with House Bill four thousand two, but also pretty critical of what this bill did is fix some some issues. And and add some things to it that were appealing to the wider audience when to get this bill passed through the legislature, as you know, there was a lot of concession work done by everybody to get this fixed and approved. What's called the Boyd Hubble Fix, which was effective in April, it really adds with intent to transfer as part of the delivery of controlled substance. It adds possession of trafficking amounts, so high quantities of drugs, not just possession, will constitute delivery. And no physical delivery of drugs actually has to take place for the crime of delivery. And these are things in the past that used to be something that constituted delivery. There was some changes and then now it's corrected legally. It also gave location-based criminal enhancements for enforcement, enhancing the crime category for delivering controlled substances within five hundred feet of a treatment facility, five hundred feet of a temporary residence shelter. And thirty feet of a public park. So those are pretty critical enhancements for public safety overall.
Does that mean like a shelter, like a homeless shelter?
Correct. What, an overview of the deflection program, like I said, we have a program coordinator and the objective really is the often alternative to jail for minor possession offenses by deflecting defendants to treatment for people suffering with addiction through the use of good navigators. Navigators are folks who have lived experiences. They've been through the system, they understand the needs, and they're there as as partners and mentors for people who are entering into treatment. The navigation operation center will be operated through Best Care. It is open currently, and I always describe this as we're building this airplane as we're flying it. And we hoping to build bigger airplane as we continue on, but currently it's open seven days a week and there's the hours from eight A M. To six thirty P M. And we'll be working towards an on-call availability or future expanded hours because I'll explain in a minute. That has that has a little bit impact of how we utilize the program. But essentially, the deflection processes officers have the discretion when they come in contact with somebody who they arrest for possession of controlled controlled substance to cite or refer defendants to the peer navigation center for voluntary treatment. And if if people engage in the treatment and make progress, the charges ultimately will not be filed. And I have a a little schematic later that shows that. And then it is a choice. Non-engagement will be reported to the secretary's office where DA Gunnels will address those cases, and I'm sure he'll go through that in just a sec. Next one.
There are eligibility and ineligibility criteria for acceptance into the program. Minor possession offenses under House Bill four thousand two, the drug enforcement misdemeanors, like I explained earlier. Essentially possession of small amount of user substances. That is what's eligible for this system. Ineligibility, it's pretty narrow. Who's ineligible? Juvenile offenders, severe mental health issues preventing people to understand the engagement volunteer, volunteerism in the process. Non-local residents, so if you're outside of the tri-county area, it's really hard to deliver treatment services in the tri-county area, so it probably wouldn't lead to success. Anyone who's currently on supervised probation or parole has to be approved by their P O. To engage in the program. Offenses against persons, sex offenders, significant restitution crimes, domestic violence pending within the last five years. Additional crimes associated with missing or drug possession charge on the same case. Those additional crimes may depend upon really the view of the DA at the time on why those crimes were occurred, but generally additional crimes along with possession aren't just going to go away. They're going to still be held accountable for those crimes and there's still going to be outcomes. Combative or non-cooperative behavior. So as you can imagine, there's all different types of folks that officers will come in contact with who are currently have their influence or have addiction going on. And if folks are combative or regressive or problematic, they may not be eligible, at least right at that time. And then our partners for the warm handoff for best care and ideal options. Those are the two treatment centers where we would have have partners at who have the navigators.
Fentanyl, fentanyl is eligible.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be the, that's going to be the one. Right. I think for for the reality of is medical assisted treatment is what folks are going to get into. That warm handoff is going to consist of getting someone connected to medical assisted treatment. So typically fentanyl, suboxone or similar, right? Within two hours, that is the goal. So we know that people need that connection quickly in order to move on to the next potential process of recovery. So that that is why our partners are set up for success in this is they're able to do that. They don't have limits on people. They are able, they could handle two hundred people tomorrow if we really were able to do that. So that's getting people into that first step is going to be the success to future. And like we all know, it could take five times, could take thirteen times, could take whatever. People also aren't just going to automatically stop soon as. So that's second to last bullet up there about the additional crimes. Does that that mean that if there are additional crimes at the time of contact with PD that they're not eligible for the program or you're just saying that those crimes don't go away there, but they're still eligible to participate?
They're eligible to participate for deflection for the possession.
For the possession only, right? It doesn't get rid of the charges for the other crimes. Okay.
Correct. Excellent. So the specific process, the arresting officer has has complete discretion to take the person to jail for booking or to issue a citation. And take them to a peer navigator for treatment or for voluntary treatment and entry into the system. Person must be voluntary participant for the deflection program. If they do not consent or volunteer, then it really it's it's taking someone to jail, just like a normal arrest, normal booking process for us. Those hours of deflection, that's what's current right now because we're starting this program as as we're going. We always talked about start small and then build. So outside of those hours, if we have somebody who we think would enter be be benefit from the program and they volunteer, we give them a citation with with a sixty-day out court date, and then they get a card that says you need to call this number and then and enter. And that still gets reported to the DA's office through the reports. And then for deflection outside of business hours, like I said, they get a card and 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 address it. I think the biggest thing here, and this is what we went through training this morning, is this discretionary on the officer's part as well. The the success of lead is law enforcement assisted diversion. That has given in other jurisdictions, and I'll use Marion County as an example, that has given the police officers who are engaging in this work and interacting with people on the street who know people who are have addiction issues and who they come in contact with a lot, that gives them an opportunity, another tool to change behavior and potentially be the person who helped them. And that and that that means a lot to folks who are on the street where typically we're responding to and maybe arresting to say, hey, I think this might benefit you. You you have an option here. That's what we hear from a lot of folks who went through the program in Marion County, and that's really why here it's ran by the sheriff's office. It was originally in public health. And the county pulled it out and Mike got the the opportunity to take charge, but that's ultimately what we're doing here. And see where we're at here. The the final slide, just before we open it up, is provided by the Oregon State Police on, here's what it looks like. If you have deflection, you go to the top, the blue, where ultimately if you get through it, no charges are filed, there's no criminal record, there's no public defender needed. If you don't choose deflection or get through it, then it goes down the bottom, arraignment, pre-trial, there's conditions built into the the O R S as well, or four thousand two, that say what specifics happen throughout the process. Ultimately, jail is not like the goal of this. As you can see, there is a lot of fail safes and opportunities there to where sometime at the very end, if there's adjudication accountability, there could be jail. But that is somebody who has filled a lot of steps throughout the way and really aren't engaging in any services at all. So that's what it looks like overall. The idea is to help people and and have partners at the table who are able to do that. And that's really what we have. So I'm going to turn it over first to DA Gunnels if you have any thoughts before we do question and answer.
Yeah, just to just to reiterate, really, this this four thousand two program, the the main idea here is that there are many opportunities for voluntary treatment. So that they get a chance, the person who's found to be in possession of drugs gets a chance to deflect out of the system right away, to go to treatment immediately, literally immediately. If they fail to do that in that sixty days between the arrest or citation and their court date, then I will file a criminal charge, they'll go to court and they'll get an opportunity to go on diversion, which is another way to voluntarily go to treatment, but that's in front of a judge. They go to treatment. If they fail to follow through with that, if they don't complete treatment successfully, that case comes back to me. The person presumably gets convicted if it's a strong enough case. They are ordered by the judge to go to treatment. If they refuse to do that, they can have a probation violation and at that point, they can go to jail and even at that point, they can get released to go to treatment if if there's a bed available and there likely would be. And so this is just a throwing every kind of treatment opportunity at at people who need treatment. Until hopefully they get the message that, yeah, you really need to go to treatment. Or else there's going to be a consequence. So to me, that's the that's the benefit of this over measure one-ten. Because measure one-ten was entirely voluntary, but there was no consequence for people who didn't follow through with it.
Yeah.
I don't really have anything to add. It's, you know, it's quite simple in in reality, and it's what our officers are doing every day. Out there, the the goal now or the key is now they'll be able to refer somebody and that's what we want. We're not giving up on diversion. So anybody that comes to jail, if their root cause is drugs and alcohol, we have ideal option in the jail, working with individuals. And that's a that's the a big key to success. M A T. With medicated assisted treatment. It gives them a chance to be able to get stabilized, at least to get them off the drug, so they can start making decisions if they want to continue this wave of crime or not. I do want to say we've had great partners, although this came upon us like right in July to to get the grant, to hire the folks. I was lucky to have a Neil Marchington, or he's our my pre-tri release deputy that works with the DA's office and the judges that extremely passionate. Generally, these programs work because you have champions. We already know Ben P D. Has champions out there that want to see a change. The sheriff's office, Redmond, Sun River, and Black Butte. All of them want to participate because they want to see their communities better. And they don't want to deal with the same individual every day. We're lucky in Deschutes County that we have a great working relationship with our law enforcement and our community mental health partners because they're the ones who wanted law enforcement in. The initial program was to be set up with behavioral health. But they wanted to be attached to us and we couldn't say no. And so far, so good. So.
I think before questions, the the thing I always ended with, and we're just teaching through in-service this week for Ben P D. So at the end of this week, everyone will have the opportunity to start utilizing the program. We've held off because we had in-service this week. But in in my kind of review, everything we're doing and all the work that's been going on and looking at one-ten and four thousand two, I think this is what our communities thought bill of measure one-ten would do. So I think it's it's been adjusted and fixed to where I think that's where our communities are looking for is options for treatment and some accountability on the backend.
So the official implementation date under the law was is this week or last week or is that right?
Well, September first.
September first.
It became illegal September first. Communities were asked to build the programs to whatever would work.
Yeah.
And credit to the folks involved. It's been very fast.
Yeah.
I imagine it's a pretty significant investment in training.
Yeah.
It's it's a a big piece, you know, and one of the things working the jail, we just didn't want to see our jail being over popular with individuals. And also we want to show those that are are struggling with addiction issues, there's hope. Because when they normally get in jail, I mean, they're very vulnerable at that time. So if if there's another, it it saves us all and it saves them eventually. So.
One of the things that I I remember hearing for for years is that we just don't have the capacity to to treat people, but it sounds like you feel pretty comfortable that we now have this capacity.
Yeah, listen to our partners and, you know, again, we're the front door, getting them, getting getting that warm handoff to the navigators who are really the wraparound folks who are the mentors who will be getting the calls at two in the morning. Talking to our navigators and develop relationships with some of the navigators who worked in Marion County to talk about their successes. Part of it is like they're doing a lot of parenting, like they're doing a lot of mentoring, they are coaching, they are parenting, they are helping people. You know, kind of like that partner and peer get through really challenging, difficult times, particularly that first thirty days. But there are navigators, they have the the best care and ideal options. Because the goal is to get people in into medical assisted treatment, it's not finding a bed, like you don't have to get in to get treatment with a bed. Although they have beds and they have availability, a lot of times the need is to get clean first and M A T. Is that first step. And that's really, you know, a a statistic was given to me this morning by one of our partners that of the seventy seventy-six percent percent of people who enter into the M A tree, M A T. Treatment continue. And I think ninety-three percent of people at at six months don't re-offend or possession cases or for for drug cases.
In a year.
Within a year. That's really good. I'd love to see, you know, just forty percent of our county to start with. It's anything we can do to get people off the street and out of addiction cycle that causes a lot of other harm to families and communities is is a positive.
Do we know anything about the discussion around funding for these programs after the first year? Like, I'm assuming that's sort of next session.
Yeah, you know, that's always the worry. Yeah, that's always the worry because, you know, if we say it stopped today, I wouldn't have to lay people off. I can move my deputy back in. I worry about best care and ideal option because they're hiring up to get the navigators. But but our partners stand strong that they think this program is going to work. We're not, we're not the first one to do it around the United States. These programs have been brought up and been successful. It's just up to us to make sure they do, and that's buy-in from our community and we're getting that. So there's no guarantees, but there we think as well as what they think this is the right direction. If you're going to try to get people help, it's not just making everything legalize and no accountability. That accountability piece is really important. Our D eight addresses that multiple times and we're hoping that's what it what happens.
But but how are they funded in other communities? I mean, if they're adding up, you know, increasing the need for staffing across communities in the sheriff's office or in the partner organizations, are they going, are their legislatures providing funding? Is there, how are communities dealing with that in other parts of the country?
I don't know about other parts. I know we've had many talks with our our state government officials that have had meetings with us. And the the individuals, Stevie, who are the two that joined us a couple of weeks ago.
Senator Lieber and Representative Krupp.
Yeah, that part of the ways and means and they're they're committed and and both of them have experience with drug and alcohol issues. So I'm not sure with the rest of the how they're funding it. The state funding seems pretty solid as as now.
One thing I would say about that is we will need, as a county, will need to show success that we're not just churning a program and drawing money in and not doing anything productive with it, obviously. But around the state, other counties will need to show success so that the legislature really buys into this being a program that should have continued funding. I think if we can show that, the funding will be there. But that that's going to take effort all around the state. Uh, but that that's going to take effort all around the state.
And like you said, acknowledging that you have to tailor make it for each community.
Yes.
What works in Portland is.
I think as you continue on the funding, though, there is something to think about. Obviously, a hundred and forty thousand dollars was not enough to. Cover all of the cost, even of this first year. Um, there is law enforcement need, there's, you know, there's attorney's office workload. Those are unfunded mandates on some at at some level, um, and I'm sure you'll hear from me later. Um, it's some presentation on the need to, how do we additionally fund this new thing that we're doing now or at least add some to it? So there is those questions about how do we keep it up, even with grants at some level, it's that's not a hundred percent funding.
And and I would think that getting the state to buy in on some additional funding for at least a couple of years to to your point about success, like it's. We're not going to be able to prove full success in one year. It's going to take a couple of years to actually get there. So it seems like that should be part of the push in this next session. You know, communities going together. County, the sheriff's office, the city and saying, hey, we we need you to keep working with us here to 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 help us with these first couple of years of implementation.
Yeah, Councilor Campbell has joined us and she had the uh, question for you.
Thank you so much. Gentlemen, thank you so much. And I'm just, everybody, I'm so sorry I'm late. Um, this is such an important topic. I think I got here in exactly enough time to read the slide with the flow charts. And I will tell you, I am so proud to live in Deschutes County at this moment. Um, I am someone who voted yes on measure one ten. Because I know that getting people into treatment is actually the answer. To trying to bring down some of these horrific addiction numbers. And to get people into treatment, you've got to take away that fear. That they're going to end up in jail or in prison. And just like you said, people need hope. They need hope that they can recover, that they can move on to a better life. I'm an alcoholic. I've been sober for twenty-two years. And it is only because at that moment in time, there was treatment for me. And my own sister-in-law and a social worker. Found a spot in rehab for me. And I am someone who knows very well that alcohol is right up there at the top. Of addictive drugs that absolutely are deadly for the individual. And dangerous for all of society. And alcohol can be one of the hardest to get off of. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the work that you have already done. And yes, all of the work our state has done to provide healthcare for everyone. Our Oregon Health Plan, our community care organizations have all shown to be effective. At delivering the help people need in a cost-effective way. And just like Megan said, um, you know, a year of data might not be enough to be able to show. How effective this kind of a system is. But I know we will be able to demonstrate that this really is the way to help people. Without spending all of our tax money, chasing them around, arresting them. The same offenders over and over again. So just so much thanks and I absolutely will pay attention to how I can help. Get the continued funding we're going to need. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if there's nothing else, um, thank you so much, Captain Schultz, Chief Krantz, um, District Attorney, Gennos.
Thanks for standing up quickly and I think it'll be good to hear how it goes.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the presentation is Growth Plan Governance and Engagement. Um, it's Brian Rankin and the team and they would like to receive feedback and your preferences.
Good afternoon. So we're going to kick off a uh, presentation. Thanks for fitting send to a busy agenda today. Um, so we'll try to get through here through our presentation relatively quickly. Um, and have some time for your input. So going to touch on three different uh, main topics today. Um, talking a little bit in more detail around community engagement. Um, Renee providing an update on communications and then spending more of the bulk of our time talking about project guidance or project governance. And that's where we're hoping to get, of course, your feedback on any and all of these subjects. Uh, but I think we um, are asking for a little bit of your direction and discussion regarding project guidance for the growth plan. Give me next slide, please. So I think we presented to the council uh, a number of times now regarding the growth plan, I think as it relates to this discussion. Um, this slide shows a number of deliverables associated with growth plan. And just worth saying, why, you know, why does engagement matter? Why does project governance matter? Um, because this project is is a little bit different than some of the more, I think you're more average projects um, that the city takes on and that it. It tends to last longer. So these projects go on for um, for a number of years. Um, so our work plan has up to three to four years, depending on whether or not you go forward with urban reserves, for example. So it's a long timeline. Um, it also tends to, these documents and the deliverables are shown, they tend to be. Kind of deep and complex on a variety of different subjects. Um, and so the project itself is including policy. It's including technical aspects and all of these things really, really matter to the community in constructing a plan for um, for our future. So I just wanted to mention, you know, that's kind of the takeaway about. Why governance is important and project guidance is important and engagement. So with that, turn it over to Elise and uh, we'll keep going from here.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to share our community engagement strategy for the growth plan. And the reason we're sharing this is because uh, engagement is super critical to the strength of this project. Engagement is always a big part of long-range planning, but uh, the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules that went into effect a few years ago. Have new requirements for cities. Um, they require, they have requirements about who you engage with. And they also try to build equity into the decision-making process. Um, so what we're sharing with you today, it's really high level. It's intended to be flexible because this is a multi-year project. Um, what this is not is a community engagement plan. Which would have like a timeline and very specific details about where and when we'll be reaching out to people. Um, instead, this is kind of intended to be like a process. Guiding principles that we can refer back to throughout the project to make sure that we're still on track. And our goal here is to really just share the direction we're thinking of moving in and get any feedback you have. So our proposed approach to engagement is two-pronged. Uh, the first side of that being equity-based engagement. And the goal here is really to center the voices of historically underrepresented groups in Bend. Um, in any city, there's kind of people who naturally end up engaged in the process, but there's also. Um, historically, a lot of people who feel the impact of decisions but are left out. So the goal with the equity-based engagement is to kind of bridge that gap. Go to where people are to get their feedback instead of expecting them to come to us. The second prong is education of the general public. And the goal here is really to uh, provide people with more information on land use in Oregon, which is a really complicated subject, as we know. Uh, most people don't fully understand the framework that we um, as city staff have to work within. So kind of just spreading information about that um, to everybody. This slide shows the steps that we see to completing equity-based engagement. So it starts with. Building relationships with historically under-engaged groups in Bend, um, building on the relationships we have and forming new ones. Educating um, people that we meet with, asking folks about their lived experiences and also being really clear with them about. Uh, the impact that their feedback will have. Elevating their voices in the way that we package feedback and finally reporting back to them and closing the loop. Um, we feel it's really important to. When you ask people for, you know, their really valuable feedback, make sure that they know the end result of how their feedback was used. Um, for education of the general public, the steps are similar but a little bit different. We would start with working with our talented communications and engagement team. Uh, to craft our messaging on the kinds of questions that we hear the most often. Um, we'd be reaching out using different methods than we have in the past. Education again, uh, listening to people, which is really important too. And then leveling the voices of uh, those who historically get engaged with those who haven't. Uh, so, oh, I also wanted to mention, I guess, as we see it now, city staff would be kind of the primary. Um, drivers of engagement. We will have a consultant for the projects. Um. But we kind of feel like if you approve that, um, as city staff, we should be the faces of the projects. The consultant can help us with tools and like providing materials, um, potentially doing facilitation in situations that make sense, but. Our plan is to kind of be in front of the community. Um, this slide is kind of bringing the two pieces together um, for an overall process for engagement. Uh, the first step here, we're calling the pre-launch and this would take place before any engagement is conducted. Um, but we'd like to do some demographic analysis of the community and then build a more detailed strategy based on what we find. Um, as part of that process, we'd also like to identify goals for engagement. So the number of people that we reach um. And figure out kind of metrics that we can use to measure that. And then at the end, we'll be able to look back and. Kind of evaluate ourselves, see if we met the goals we set. The second phase disperse is um, kind of more of that widespread education, um, introducing people to the project. And spreading information. The third phase um, is more kind of like listening to people, um, gathering feedback from smaller groups of people. Um, equity-based engagement would kind of be taking place here. The fourth phase discussion is kind of where decision-making would start. So any um, guidance structure that gets set up would. Kind of begin evaluating feedback and then finally decisions um. And closing the loop again, reporting back to people so that they know what ended up. Um, and with that, I'm going to hand it off to Renee for communications.
Thank you. The next section, next section outlines at a very high level our communications plan and how it out. How it aligns with the engagement process. As Elise said, the two work together and and we need to make sure that they are informing each process. Next, please. Sorry.
Could I ask, um, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, Renee, I think you might have just answered my question. This is a high-level communications plan. For any project or are we talking about a specific project here today? Are we talking about like the U G B expansion or something? Please, thank you.
It's a high-level plan for the growth plan that Brian and Elise have set up. So all aspects of that plan. Thank you. Okay. Great, thank you.
But it's not, it's not about the hundred acre piece. This is about all the other pieces of work.
Correct.
And we heard that in the sort of higher level overview at the county joint meeting the other day. This is everything else but, this is about everything else but that, um, that hundred acre piece.
Yes, correct. I think not to say that it's done in isolation, Councilor Campbell. Um, of course, other projects connect with this project. Um, and then, of course, there are going to be things that we learn uh, and can can use from this project and apply to other projects. So it's not necessarily in isolation, but it is pertaining to specifically the growth plan um. That will be scoped in this coming year and then take place over the next three or three or so years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Looking at our communications roadmap for this project, there are four efforts we want to explore. The first one is to develop a theme line. So when we talk about this over the next three to four years, how do we package it up? And we are in the process right now of coming up with a line. Think of like building a better bend, for example. We will not use that line, but something like that. Um, the next step is to update our website. As you all know, we are in a process to update the entire site. We want to make sure, though, that every single thing we are doing is concisely mayor Proton Bergens. Um, updated on the site so people can find the information that they need. At the same time, we are developing an educational campaign that will be used um, on social media primarily. So this talks about land use. Um, it's intended to be an informative educational campaign. Talking about things that people ne- maybe need to be reminded of or might not understand. So we're in the process working with the growth management team. What are all those subjects that we constantly hear about that people might have misperceptions about? So we're developing some messaging around that, that we can just sprinkle on social media throughout the year to be helpful.
Spanish too.
Uh, yes, absolutely. Thank you for that reminder. And then finally, all this work really helped set us up for what we're calling a multimedia campaign. That will run in um, probably spring of next year or after that. So in in the next slide, we will share what that looks like. Actually, it's not the next slide, it's the slide after that, but I'll first talk about this slide. So our communication goals, as I just mentioned, one is to educate the community on the land use system. There was a lot of work done, I think, in previous years with the neighborhood association. So we are looking at some of that content and how that can be updated. Also encourage the community to participate and engage in the conversation. So that's how we're working really closely with the framework that Elise just um, shared with you all. Inform the community on the city's current and future growth and infrastructure plan. So everything from transportation, water, how do those other aspects fit into this plan? And then again, lay the foundation for the multimedia communications and engagement campaign for future years. So it's really important as we look at this process, we are going to be going out to the community, engaging with the community, we're going to be hearing from them. And then we're in developing messaging to help clarify, help answer questions. Go back, do the same thing. It's almost like a wash and repeat. Over the next several years because we want to make sure that we have current, accurate, informative information out in the community. While we're doing this, we will have an evergreen campaign that is educational and informative-based. And then when we look at the multimedia campaign, we're going to explore some initiatives or tactics such as podcasts, our own podcasts. And maybe other podcasts that are produced by other entities in the community, look at our own newsletter. Um, do forums. We talked about meeting with city club and having a forum next summer possibly. And then, of course, social media, we might look at other efforts as well, but we will explore those as we learn more from the community on where they get their information. Thank you.
Thank you for not saying survey. Well, Eric and I were at a meeting and and we were at a meeting with um, Spanish-speaking populations who said. The only time we ever hear from the city, we want a survey. And then we never hear again. And so I I so appreciate the. Circling back and saying, you know, we we listen to you and this is, and this is what the next step is because that is so important. Um, otherwise, you're just, you're just taking and you're not giving. Okay, so thank you for that.
Okay, so we're going to shift gears here into project kind of guidance and governance. Um. I have a question kind of related to the first part of that, okay?
Sure.
So I'm curious about the extent to which maybe this is sort of a segue from what you were just talking about is. But what extent have we engaged with some of the groups that were considered to be underrepresented from these processes in the past to kind of. Get their input or or is that part of the plan early? On how we talk to them, when we talk to them, where we talk to them, engage them and listen to them?
Yeah, I think that is. You look at different work, different work and different projects, I think have touched on different parts of the community in different ways. So I can't necessarily speak for other projects. I think the the one nearest and dearest to growth management's uh, work has been the climate-friendly area study. Which was a project where we were working with different members of the community, holding focus groups, for example, asking more specific questions. Around benefits and burdens and how this was, how this project could benefit, impact. Or address the issues that various communities had. Um, so that's one, just a small example, focal groups uh, or focus groups. Doing pop-ups at different locations around the community, um, and partnering with other agencies and doing that and hitting different groups and of. The community through those me- means and techniques. Um, so yeah, this is not um. The the goal here is to to know what, to look at the best practices that the city is already taking on in a variety of different departments. To look at other organizations as well and look at some other practices there. Uh, look at those existing relationships and and also focus on building them. Uh, we have to rebuild or build some of these relationships anew. Um, and that's in part why the project is not not planning on just going right out next year. And starting some kind of big engagement process. It's going to take some time to establish a plan, be focused, know the communities where we have good. Be focused, know the communities where we have good relationships and and can make those connections easily, know where we need to do some work. Um, and build those relationships before you start. Engaging in more of the intensive project work. Um, so that's kind of a, that's one of a few reasons why that first year. Um, is set up that way. It's not, so does that, does that make sense, counselor?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, just making sure that we're engaging people. Before we start asking the question, yes, what I think I hear you saying. Um, and even how we go about that and when we go about it. The other thing I just was wondering if you could talk a little more about was this idea of the leveling, it's sort of the the second part was. Talked about leveling the, the turn, if I heard you right. Uh, folks who who've had power influence on stuff like this in the past, but how do we level that with people who haven't, this underrepresented groups? What's that going to look like? Because it seems to me that in many ways, that's almost. The biggest challenge and the most important step on the equity side of things, right? If we don't eventually get to there. Then everything we did is maybe. Depends on how you look at it, but some people will be cynical and say, well, that was great, but. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure what that looks like. Exactly. I'm just curious if anybody, if we even know, if we don't know, it's okay, but.
I think, um, to answer your question, like, a lot of. City processes everywhere are kind of set up so that. Um, if you have time or you're kind of like naturally paying attention to things. And you're loud, like your voice will be heard. It's very much a come to us, like potentially sit in this room and tell us your opinion. And I think the way I see equity-based engagement is. Us like going and physically being in places that we haven't been before. Um, we as a team have like an entire list of ideas that, um, we could potentially use to do this and. I think a lot of it will depend on like local partnerships. So maybe we work with Saint Charles and we do a workshop onsite. Or we work, um, with a high school and do like a youth-only workshop because. Young people who are very affected by the future are often also left left out of that process. So. To me, it's a lot of just like physically being in spaces that city staff maybe, um, haven't been or just haven't been able to be in the past.
Uh, uh, bringing what you hear into the process and then also bringing the people. Into this process as well. So it's not just about going out, but it's also bringing in and including in the decision-making process, which kind of leads to the project governance. But something that we as staff, and when I say staff, you know, it's it's including. Our equity department, our communications department, we have a lot of these conversations. The difficulty in one sense is the council is the ultimate decision-maker in all of this. Right? So you as a council will be the body that regulatorily has to make these calls and eventually make these decisions. So it's, it's in a sense, a question to you too, like how we want to do this and we're equipped to do it, we're. Excited to do this. You as a council. What is it that you want and what you need and how can we help advance those goals? And and still advance equity goals and by helping you know what different members of your community are thinking and feeling about these decisions. And bring that into your ultimate decision-making process.
Maybe to also answer your question, I think Brian had talked about this, part of it is just using. Planar language too of, I think we can easily get caught into the alphabet soup of.
Yeah.
Of, uh, acronyms and U G Bs and technical and P F Ps and all the things. And so. When we talk about growth and what it means, really making sure the language is more human-centered. Um, so that we can connect with people and even just that level setting of how that work and land use system works, explaining that and something. It's a little less wonky, you know, a little more connected to how people live their lives. To make it matter.
And I think just continuing to, um, somehow remind us throughout the process, process, here's the different. Um, perspectives we've heard, here's the different opinions or. This group of people thinks, you know, on this question, you should go that way, but there's another group of people who actually think pretty differently about it. And making sure that we're reminded repeatedly about that, because I think in in that presentation, it was sort of the second step. It wasn't the. Engagement so much, it was at the decision-making. How do we continue to level the input and make sure we hear? All the perspectives, because as we get closer to decisions, as we all know, we're going to tend to, we tend to get overwhelmed with. Um, folks who have the time and the money and the ability to show up. To come to the meetings, to write long input letters, to do all that stuff, to ground it in law. And, um, and how, how, you know, that can sound more informed and how do we continue to hear from the average people? And people who who maybe don't do that as regularly. So I don't have an answer to that question on exactly what we. How we do that, other than to ask you to keep reminding us throughout the process about those different, yes, perspectives to. Yeah.
Yeah.
And us participating in some of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I see Bart your hand up.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Mike, you're, I, I think you're a hundred percent right. Um, for the previous U G B expansion, we had council office hours. Um, at that time, and I promise you, a lot of attorneys. Ended up just being attorneys, you know, and maybe one. Community member who was the same one who showed was there every single time. So, yeah, actually getting to the, it, you know, community members who are going to be affected. You know, is challenging, but, uh, you know, I do think going out to meet them. Is more effective than trying to get people to come in and meet us. Those tend to be exactly the people you described, the ones who have time or money or. You know, a dog in the fight. So, thank you.
Okay, shifting to governance here and project guidance. Um, so what we've done here in this presentation is kind of hear the different. Couple of different ways that you as a council could. Help yourselves navigate through this project. Um, and it, and so we've kind of grouped pros and cons. And we're starting with the city council itself. Um, so in this case. The council, um, in different forms can be engaged in this project. Um, the full council, um, or as different subcommittees. So, you know, some of the benefits of that, I think, uh, there hasn't been a major project where the council hasn't been. Involved directly. I guess the question is how much? And so we're doing a little temperature check here as well. How much is is just right? Not too much, not too little. Let's find the just right. Um, so there is that advantage in having you know enough of the details and be tracking the project throughout. So that you feel connected to the project, can guide that project. Um, so that has some benefits to you being deeply involved in that. And then you have multiple touchpoints, which I think is necessary. Um, to follow a project like this and understand the connections, the challenges, of course, it's a lot of information, takes a lot of time. And now this could potentially compete. With your other objectives as a council, because, um, I can tell you, just even from my standpoint, you're all very busy.
Having been on one of the advisor committees for the last growth update. And now sitting on the council, it's a little hard for me to imagine. On top of the regular workload, all the reading kind of prep work for counselors to to do, I mean. Because it came in these huge slugs that we have a little more spread out for the committee.
I guess the question is like, what would we be doing more? Just sitting and listening and absorbing? Because that's a lot different, you know, showing up to something for a couple of hours and yes, having to read a, you know.
Yeah, so, um, let's see, let's go, move on to your existing boards and commission. You have a number of very talented commissions. Uh, benefits, they're already formed, they're an existing resource, they have an interest, um, interested in different backgrounds, um. And they have kind of a specialization within their particular committee, which, um. When you look at it, we're probably going to touch on the expertise or need the expertise from each one of your committees, um, throughout this process. Um, so you're getting a a wide variety of opinions. Um, and then of course, challenges, it would have the same impact on them. If you're requiring, say, if you said, we want B D A B and A H A C to just take the whole thing or. We want this combination of individual committees, it will overwhelm their schedules, it will overwhelm their agendas. I think there are also impacts on liaisons as well. Um, and then you may not have the kind of representation that you want as a council to help you make this more informed decision on this project. Um, another idea that's been discussed is the committee of committees, so you can pull from those existing committees. Um, and so you can pull them all together, you're drawing, and this has some certain advantages in that you're. Getting that diversity of opinions and diversity of expertise and representation all in the same room at the same time. It's a bit more streamlined. We think it would be more streamlined than working with all of the individual committees. Um, and then could be managed by a G M growth management, uh, staff. And challenges, um, you're creating a new committee, takes a little bit of time to do that. Uh, we can talk about that process in detail as we get more direction, uh, later on. And then, you know, we don't want to fatigue our existing committee members too much. They already have. Uh, full plates and they're, they're volunteers, um, so we want to respect their time. Um, and then you're also, your composition would then be kind of limited to the members on our existing committees. Uh, new committee or stakeholder group, this is very close to what, um, we've done in the past on big projects, a, a technical advisory committee. Um, you know, Mike, uh, councillor Riley sat on, uh, C TAC, for example, he was on the urban growth boundary advisory committees as well. So very familiar with that, um, that model. You know, you're able to customize the benefits, you're customizing that group, um, and you can, you can engage with a wide variety of other folks and there's some flexibility in the structure. Downsides being that it, it's quite expensive, um, and in a sense, you are really. Placing a lot of power and influence within that one group, uh, that you assemble. Um, and so I think there are some challenges with with that aspect of this particular, um. Form of project and governance and guidance. Um, so let's share what we heard from the community building subcommittee. Um, we had the same presentation discussion with them. Here's what we heard and then I'll, I'll do my best and I may not get everything right. We're trying to summarize here, but. Yes, council wants to be involved in regular check-ins, for example, maybe we do a couple of times a year, we go offsite. For example, we're not necessarily during a council, typical council, um, meeting because of the. The length and the depth of the subject matter, um, and then consider using, having council liaisons to the project itself. Uh, we heard support for using some of the existing structures, no- nothing exact here, but there was some resonance around the. Uh, using the council subcommittees as as appropriate. Um, for for guidance, uh, but working with your existing committees and then forming a new committee. So the committee of committees idea seemed to resonate. And then, uh, kind of with an idea, well, if you get really stuck on an economic development issue, for example, you go to B D A B or a housing issue, go to A H A C. So. Not using the individual committees as the main source, but focusing more on the committee of committees. Um, let's see, there was strong support for engagement. Um, and then there were some, um, a little bit of discussion on experimenting with new formats like the civic assembly through healthy democracy, as that idea was mentioned. Um, and I think just general concern about the workload and capacity of both council and all the committees. So. Now the question would be, well, as the committee, as the stewardship so committee, what's, what, what are your thoughts? What are your, what are your feelings about a good combination? Um, of different types of. Folks and to help you govern and guide the project. So, quick, time for open discussion, brainstorming questions, anything you might have.
I struggle knowing the demographics of our committee representation. I struggle with. Saying, hey committees, hey, hey, B D A B, I mean, um. Let's talk about, you know, economic growth in 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 our community, not the person that's living in East Bend and feels like. Um, their neighborhood's being ignored by the city and growth is all around them, um, and they can't pay their mortgage. Um. So that's, that's, that's who I would like to hear from. We, we hear from the people that, um. That tell us how they feel about growth all the time. I'd like to hear from people that don't tell us how they feel about growth and how it's impacting them. Um, I love the idea of a civic assembly or. Some of the new methods of communication that we have had, um, that have, I think, been really successful. Town halls, round tables, um. I just, I get nervous about dropping all of this to our committees. Or a committee of committees.
Agreed, a hundred percent. Um, we continue to struggle. To find, um, membership on our standing committee, um, of, you know. Exactly those folks you talked about, you know, people who really, they are working, many folks are working more than one job. And I thought civic assembly at exactly the same moment when you said that. Um, maybe honestly randomly selected folks from. All the neighborhoods, um, is an interesting idea, I think.
I think, I, I, the committee of committees makes some sense to me as, um, you know, relying on existing structures, but that we need more than that. I think that. For the reasons that both, um, councillor Perkins and Campbell said, we need to try more strategies than that. But it does make some sense to me to use people who are engaged. I mean, there's two sides, since we really do need to do. The part that that is about humanizing it and making it easy to understand and all that, and it's also really technical. Right? There are a lot of details that have to be addressed and dealt with, can't ignore, and. You have more people who have, are more likely to understand some of that technical side on the existing committees, but even those folks are new to a lot of this, right? Um, because it, it takes a while to get up to speed on it. Um, so I'd like to see some combination of both. I, I guess, um, and maybe that is, you know, listening sessions, round tables. I think the challenge is. They have to be, they have to be targeted, like they can't just be on the super big giant questions. They have to be on either places where. There's more disagreement or, um, you know, we really like to dig in for some reason, where. Uh, the technical part of it, um, is not the key driver, because sometimes I think some of the technical part. Sort of, sort of really does shape the decision to some extent, but there's parts where maybe that's not the case. And I think that's the same with civic assemblies. You know, how do you ask a question that's not just so big that it's kind of meaningless in the system versus something that's so narrow that it's made not that helpful? So. It, it might be interesting to see if you could try one or two of those, but, um. I, and that, you know, as I'm saying all that, it sounds like more work. Yeah, but it may be that what we need is something that's, you know, not as deep as we had with the. The big giant committees in the two previous years, we've done like this, C TAC and U G B, but. Something in between that is more existing systems and structures. Plus.
Plus.
Plus, yes, yeah, I agree. I, you know, it's kind of the yes and, and you're exactly right. Every time we say yes and. It sounds like more work. There absolutely is something to say for the folks who are serving on our standing committees. They have a sense of just the context of this growth, you know, what is just happening on a day-to-day basis. For economic growth or for affordable housing. Um, and then, yeah, they get so big and unmanageable. I am imagining that whatever kind of oversight committee there is. There probably will be subcommittees, um, maybe transportation, for example, or other infrastructure. Um, and in that way, maybe we're starting to get to more manageable bites for people. Thanks. Oh, and, and you know, we, we do already provide stipends. Um, you know, we can, maybe we just want to look at that and are we trying to more seriously? Uh, provide a little bit of income for people that can find time to help.
All good points, and I think, you know, we're still building this, and as Brian talked about at the full council work session a few weeks ago. You know, the first year of this growth plan is really a lot of staff kind of heads down doing some of that technical work. So we have some time to think about this and get this right. We're actually going to be coming into the full council and on September eighteenth. So we have more opportunities to kind of talk about this there and kind of build, yes. Yep, and and Bill, that's why we, we were kind of deliberate. This is a big project, very meaningful, went to both subcommittees. And then we'll come back to the full council, uh, and keep, uh. Iterating and finding the right balance of all. I think, I think we're on the same page. We want to do some of that work and leverage some of the committees. Um, and have some, a bit of a rudder, but we really want to do much more work to going out to people. And finding voices that haven't been traditionally involved in the process. So I think we will continue building on the themes that you've talked about here and present that to, to council.
This is perfect. This is the kind of feedback we're hoping for, you know, it's, um, and I think it's pretty closely aligned to what we heard in the community building subcommittee as well. Um, so at least you're tracking in similar directions here.
We did focus groups during some point during the. Transportation stuff, and it may have been more about the bond measure and the bond measure campaign, but I actually thought that those were some of the most useful things. To watch the videos of them, you're not in the rooms, you're not shaping them. But really getting to hear what people had to say is very interesting.
And that's where that. Yeah, I can kind of come into, it's very supportive of that, yeah.
Right, where you're, you're not there and, um, and so the, the influence on it is different.
Well, maybe at the initial engagement that you do, there'll be some guided. Well, maybe at the initial engagement that you do, there'll be some guidance that naturally comes out of that too. Feeling how people want to be involved in this process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, American Rescue Plan Act. He's looking for update. She's going to give you an update and looking for guidance from you. And this is Financial Reporting Manager, Kimola Lutz.
Good afternoon, everyone. Share my screen here. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kimola Lutz. I am the Accounting and Financial Reporting Manager here at the city. And I am here to give a quick update on the American Rescue Plan Act spending, also known as ARPA. Talk about some key dates that we've got coming up here shortly. And then also look to you all for approval on a recommendation on the reallocation of unobligated ARPA funds that we have. So sorry, is it sharing? Okay. Just want to make sure it's not showing all the stuff that I can see on my screen for you all. So as you all know, we've received a little over 14 million from the treasury in ARPA funding that was spread out over 2021 and 2022. And some key dates to remember here, and really why I'm here today is this December 2024, all funds must be obligated. In November of 2023, the treasury issued some updated guidance in terms of what they deem as obligated, which really just means we need to have a purchase order, a contract, some sort of agreement in place to make sure that those funds meet that definition of obligated per the treasury. And then in December of 2026, all of the ARPA funds must be spent. So total spending to date as of September of 2024 is a little, almost nine million dollars. For reference, when I was here back in May, we spent almost six million dollars. We did quite a bit of spending between April and June, which is great. The total amount that we currently have obligated that meets that treasury definition, but we haven't spent yet is almost 4.7 million. And then the amount remaining to be obligated by December 31st is 485,000 essentially. Which brings me to kind of my next piece. When I was here in May, we talked a little bit about the different uses or things that we could do with this unobligated funding and how that really played into the funding coming from the state with Houseless. And so in working with the Houseless Group and also the City Managers Group, I brought forward a recommendation today to reallocate this remaining 485,000 to a managed camp partnership with Deschutes County that Eric has, and City Manager's Office has been working with the county. And to reallocate part of that for the partnership and then along with the support staff that will help manage that and really kind of bring that program together. And then from here, moving forward, we would work with the departments and legal to get a contract drafted. And sure, and so we can make sure that we meet those obligation deadlines.
I kind of alluded to this at our joint meeting. So it seems like there's a lot of momentum and we wanted to make sure that we were good partners. And as we talked about in May, we were a little uncertain about the state funding for shelters. That has become much more clear, so we feel comfortable and out in allocating these unobligated funds to this purpose, because we've, we know that we have enough funding based on what we're hearing from O H C S, Oregon Housing and Community Services. And then what ARPA dollars we do have under contract that we can have the existing shelters. The Central Oregon Villages, Lighthouse Navigation Center, the Rainbow and Stepping Stone funded through minimum of December of 2025, which will take us through the next legislative session, which we're hopeful that we'll get more clarity about sustainable funding from there, but we, we know that we don't have that risk of having to close before we get that answer. Because we'll, we'll have that answer before the end of this fiscal year, as the session ends in June-ish. So we felt comfortable in allocating these dollars towards that project.
Well, you know, I'm in support.
I think we want to get this moving. And I think this is our, our chance to really show that we're serious about following through on it. So in partnership with the county, so I think I fully support this.
And Barb, are you okay with this direction?
Absolutely, yes. That's, you know, it's a, it's a great list. Everything on that list is important. But right now this is just the, the gap. And so yes, absolutely support this.
Okay.
Great. That's easy. We can make up some time and we'll get to our next presenter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presentation, the Shute Soil and Water Conservation District. She's got an overview. We got the District Manager, Erin Kell Cullen.
Hi, everyone. Let me share my screen. And team.
The way I'm William Coon, I've been in Shutes County for, well, let's see, I think the population was originally 6,000. And you can also either blame me or thank me for introducing Mr. Riley to Shutes County. That goes back a long time.
That goes back a long way ago.
Thank you.
Was that your position?
Oh, yes. I am the Sisters Zone Two Representative on the Sloan Water Conservation District.
I am Erin Kell Cullen. I am the Deschutes Soil and Water Conservation District Manager. And to shorten, we go by Deschutes SWCD. And thank you for having us and fitting us into your schedule. And so I wanted this presentation, we'll keep it to the 15 minutes, just an introduction of our organization, who we are, how we fit into Deschutes County. And so before I go into our slide deck, every county in the state of Oregon and the whole United States has a soil and water conservation district for a little bit of history. We were all established with the Natural Resource Conservation Service, who is a part of USDA, so the federal government, back during the Dust Bowl. And soil and water conservation districts were established to assist farmers and agriculture producers in soil health and agricultural production. Here we are at 2024, way past the Dust Bowl. A lot of counties in Oregon have become very urbanized, so every soil and water district throughout the state looks very differently. But overall, we were established to assist rural landowners. And obviously, Deschutes County becomes more and more urbanized on a daily basis. And so we're really searching our efforts to include the urban communities as well. So our mission is to encourage and promote the responsible stewardship of our natural resources through conservation, restoration and protection. Enhance the health, economics, economic prosperity and quality of life for the current and future citizens. We envision vibrant and healthy farms, forests, bodies of water, wildlife and communities through fostering of sustainable economic, ecological and social well-being. We are a very tricky organization. We're a local government, we're a special district. We work with private lands throughout all of Deschutes County. We provide technical assistance, financial assistance, education to private landowners to address natural resource concerns on their property. And we are non-regulatory, so we work only as a voluntary effort through those landowners. So for example, if a landowner gives us a call and says, I just bought a 40 acre farm with irrigation and I have, I need some assistance. I'm not really sure how to operate this. We can go to their property, work with them, develop management plans, conservation plans, really work with the landowner on what they would like to see on their property as well as enhance the resources on their property. So our main values is local partnership, sustainability, transparency and equity. And I'm not going to read everything on every slide, so we keep going through our time. And these are all slides we put together a new strategic plan this winter. And that was in a partnership with a lot of our partner organizations, which as we all know, there are lots of conservation and environmental organizations in central Oregon. So through those collaborative meetings, we really developed this new strategic plan. And these are our visions for Deschutes County. So clean and healthy and abundant water resources, healthy soils for farms, management of rural lands, citizens stewarding natural resources for the benefit of all residents, vibrant urban and rural communities through green spaces, renewable energy, dark nighttime sky protection, equitable access to nourishing local foods, outdoor natural spaces and active ongoing collaboration among conservation agencies. And that one is very key, that last one. There is a lot, as I said, a lot of organizations, and I think the best thing I've seen in central Oregon, I've worked in other places in the camp, in the country, is just the amazing collaboration of everyone. Everyone is very great at working together and everyone has their lane that they stay in, but we also really support everyone in accomplishing goals and realize that we can't do it alone. Every organization is available to different funding sources, different avenues, and we all complement each other and really work well together. So these are, as you can see, soil and water conservation districts, really the sky's the limit of what we're able to do. And these are our Deschutes Conservation Priorities. And the size of these blocks is really how much funding and focus our, our staff has spent on these conservation priorities. So water and forest health and wildfire risk reduction are our top funded programs. And then we go to soil health, imaginative agriculture, watershed restoration, wildlife and pollinator habitat, natural resource education, invasive weeds and urban agriculture. And then I just wanted to go through some quick numbers of the projects and accomplishments. I have been the manager for four years and so these are numbers since about June of 2020 that I've, was able to put together. So since 2020, we've spent $772,000 on projects and that is passed through funds. So not going to staff personnel that is actually implementing projects on the ground. We have funded 76 projects, received 24 grants and treated 486 acres through that. And this pie chart kind of shows how that funding is dispersed through water, forest health, renewable energy, wildlife and pollinators, urban agriculture and weeds. And we received ARPA funding through Deschutes County, so not the city events. And we received $300,000 and we developed a program to work with landowners, irrigation landowners throughout Deschutes County on converting their systems from flood to sprinkler. So flood systems are very inefficient for both water conservation and for the farm and the farmer. And so we treated, we converted 150 acres of flood irrigation to sprinkler systems through that funding source. We also do annual irrigation water management workshops for small farms and urban producers throughout the county. This year we had a small farm school and that was at the Deschutes County Fairgrounds. They had a big event there this spring that we attended and we taught a lot of those different workshops, so 10 workshops. And that was about 120 attendees. And we plan to continue this workshop on an annual basis. And for forest health, our most recent funding source was through the Senate Bill 762. And we received funding to assist landowners around Bend and Sisters to help with their forest health on their properties as well as reduce wildfire risk protection. And a lot of our aim for these forest health projects are working with landowners in the wildland urban interface surrounding our large cities. A lot of these landowners own upwards of 40 acres to 1,000 acres and the cost of these projects is big. So we are only putting a dent in the ability of them to protect the health of their forest, which also protects wildfire risk reduction as wildfires move through our systems and into our cities. So we were able to treat 290 acres, working with seven landowners on that project. And that's just a quick little before and after picture of a dense property. And then after they thinned it for some forest health. And another one of our top programs is doing urban agriculture. So we've gotten some grants through the National Association of Conservation Districts. And that was to work on community garden workshops. So that's what we're currently doing. We're working with Miller's Landing Community Garden, Franklin's Corner and Sisters Community Garden. And that's educational workshops to help all community members learn how to garden and help them with any financial constraints that those gardens may have. We also worked with the Environmental Center a couple of years ago on school garden workshops. And that was a similar program to help school gardens with any financial needs that they may have, as well as educational opportunities. We also have partnered with a Great Basin Nursery, one of our native nurseries in town on a plant sale. And we do that at the Earth Day Fair. We've done that for the past two years and that was really successful. And I'm going to let you take these next couple of slides, William. So I will say, just a quick little background before William takes this is the SWCD, we operate on limited grants. We only have one grant that is available to us on an annual basis. The rest is, we are all grant funded for short-term grants. And our capacity is limited. Our staff is currently three full-time staff, one part-time staff. And as we've seen on a year-to-year basis, our capacity cannot keep up with the amount of phone calls we're getting from private landowners and communities for just even technical assistance. And
And I'm going to step in and say, she can't say much more.
Yes. So that is why William is going to take over on this component.
Talking legal, Sarah. I want to, want you to know a little bit more about me and what I feel about Bend and Deschutes County. My wife and I first came through Bend. Told you the population was rather small. And we fell in love with it because Albertson's, excuse me, Safeway had a tree, or trees growing in the parking lot. They were huge. They are huge. And I thought any, any community who doesn't cut all the trees down before they build their buildings is pretty amazing. We also did our laundry. And at the laundromat, the community people that we saw there talked about the impressive, I think it was 22 city parks at the time. The population was pretty small and that, that number of parks was amazing to me. Now, I joined the Bend Recycling Team, which was followed by the Recycling Team. And that's how Mr. Riley was invited to town. And I believe that the work that we did as a recycling team was pretty amazing. I knew most of the, the county folks that dealt with solid waste on a first-name basis, and I very much appreciated it. When my wife was asked to serve on the Sloan Water Conservation District, she and a woman by the name of Patricia Gainesforth, who was on the board, was, were able to convince me that what is going on with the district was very impressive. And when my wife was not able to serve anymore, I took over her position. So I've been on the board since 2008. And I'm not officially running this year. But if people want to write my name in, they can do that. But I want you to know that the district has grown tremendously from original, I think it was a $40,000 stipend we got from the state. And what we do with that $40,000 is to roll it into projects that we can get other organizations to join with us on.
We do have four minutes left.
We only have four minutes. Shame on me.
And I'd like to
I want you to know that Erin, in particular, over the past four years has really surpassed any of our former managers and she is doing And she is doing a super job of um, urging us to seek this measure that we're asking for, a six cent authorization per thousand dollars of valuation. And I've, um, I would like to see that money for the betterment of the district so that we can grow our staff. We need more staff members with solid funds behind it to be able to grow them. Please.
Yeah, so I can provide information of this, and that is all we're doing today. So I'll just be really fast. Uh, the board took this vote in July to move forward with a measure that we are putting on the November ballot. We, as a Soil and Water Conservation District, have statute to do this. And like William said, we would like to utilize this funding for capacity and as well as utilize a lot of this money to get more additional projects on the ground, as well as leverage additional funding with this money. And we would be asking six cents um, for the average homeowner. When I talked to the assessor, the average assessed value is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So an average of fourteen dollars a year. And these are some projects that we would like to fund on an annual basis. Neighborhood and urban green spaces for additional forest health projects and additional water conservation projects. And we're running out of time, so I'll just stop there. Um, sorry, we don't have a lot of time for questions and answers. But like I said, this is just an informational about where we are as a district and what we're moving forward with. Thank you.
Any specific ask of the city council?
Uh, we'd like your support. We'd like you to pitch in.
It might be helpful to, as a follow-up, to say why you think the Bend City Council should weigh on something, I'm just, just because I think it's a bad question.
Yeah.
Something that affects primarily rural landowners.
Yes.
In terms of the assistance provided.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I know some of what you've done has been kind of more urban, but I think it might be a good follow-up.
Mm-hmm.
Email to the council.
Yeah, definitely.
I do know that there are a lot of um, gardeners.
Yeah.
There are a lot of folks who would like to um, see us be able to do more in Bend and Sisters and Primeville. Oh, Primeville. I'm gonna back up, say Sisters and Lapine.
Yeah, I'm happy to follow up with that. And like I said, this was an introduction. And I think too, uh, this funding could be used in many different ways, and our goal would be to reach the more urban environments. But I also think that we all live here for specific reasons, and I think outside of the urban centers is why we all live here. So I think keeping that in mind and protecting those spaces is really important to the urban communities.
Great.
And I think Sharon, if you have support from other elected officials, would be helpful as well.
Okay, great.
And if there's nothing more, you all, a couple of you have hard stops at four P M.
Yeah.
Yes. Did you want to do the honors, Counselor Campbell?
Move to adjourn.